What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. They were looking at twenty five big line flapping from the bottom. So we flatted and the flop was.
Queen ten.
Pretty good, pretty good.
I feel like the turn is gonna be a seven.
So I think small betting is in order. Oh, it is the it's the triple seven, the standard triple seven.
Yeah, I knew it.
Uh, first under the gun.
I'm bumping it up.
Fault.
I don't think it, I don't think it uh three bets as much as you think. I think like first under the gun.
A little bit.
It's 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 a big majority of a big minority. I think it's gonna mainly call.
I think zero response between folding and raising.
Oh, you gotta you gotta call you your closing position. I would be shocked if you're folding this.
No, no, I think I I think raises good.
Ten percent raise ninety percent call?
Yes, I agree with that Louis. Final answer.
Ooh, make it forty sixty.
So what what's the ace jack doing? Is it uh is it a little more spicy?
I think ace jack might be a better flat than ace ten.
See, you and I are backwards mentally right now Louis. Let's see. Let's see who is right and who is wrong. I'm wrong, you are right.
Yeah, because we can get like, I think with the ten, it's like most of the bottom of his ranges are like jacks, so we can get them to fold.
Interesting.
I mean, we don't want him to fold. We don't fold like king, king jack, do we?
Does that pattern consist or is that pattern consistent if you move up to let's say forty?
I mean, this is how free betting always works. You you kind of wanna free bet stuff which is like just below that bottom kind of range.
Well, that would be.
It is, it is pretty consistent.
It's like say, say we move this to like a hijack open, we'll probably start free betting like ace nine.
When you get really deep. Still.
I mean, I I always knew ace ten is always like if three bets loads us under the gun, it's got good properties.
The Nazi was.
This is why you're crushing the games for ten BB per hundred Louis. On point.
So to bet or not to bet?
Um, I like a small bet monotone board. I'm just gonna bet very small.
I check it.
Good check, I think checking is pretty fine.
So you're range betting Galen or?
I'm I'm probably over yeah, I'm probably range betting this in game.
Why not?
Good to know. No, 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 I I think range bet's bad.
What are you gonna do Frank? You're gonna check or gonna fold?
I'm pussy, I'm checking.
Yeah, but uh so all right, how do you can, how do you construct your bluff range here? What logic do you use to decide?
Oh, are you spades? Spades, bad pairs.
Well, we we don't have a spade and we were betting a lot on the flop, sorry. I'm I wanna go back to flop.
Okay. Honestly, like I'm just leveraging the fact that such a narrow branch of his hands are gonna have an easy time continuing and population is probably over folding that I I think I'm just range betting versus checks. It's a hard board to check raise like a lot of people aren't gonna be balanced with their bluffs. They're not gonna find you know, some of the more obscure ones you'll see in a solver because of the monotone text, the monotone nature of the board. So I feel like you just get really clean information back. If you get check raised, it's it's a flush or it's like the ace of spades.
You're gonna you you don't, why are you range betting? You don't have the you don't have the range advantage.
Check raise Galen on mono.
They have that, this is under the gum range. They have all the over pairs, all the big pairs we don't. Why would you range bet?
As it say.
He's exploiting them Louis.
The factor of being in position and having a monotone board. Right, over and over again. You raise the button, the big blind they fan, you get a monotone board. And most of the scenarios when you're in position, you get a monotone board, you can bet a lot. Small.
Can we see the equities? Can we see the equities?
Are you gonna bluff the turn now too?
The ranging more than we're betting for what it's worth. Now it gets hard.
The turn now.
Yeah, not so.
Well, basically.
Are you bluffing?
The rule is simple, okay? The board must not bear, that's one, and two, the flush must not come in. And if you like uh satisfy these two exigences, usually you can double barrel. Now the flush.
No, I I I'm gonna disagree with the flush not coming in cuz we need bluffs in both lines and he has plenty of like pocket tens, no spade that is just gonna fold.
Think about this.
I don't know.
It has a lot.
King, queen, no spade.
Has a lot more spades than what it had before we fired.
What would you do with eight five diamonds here?
Check.
You're not gonna bluff it?
No, I don't bluff anymore here. Am I wrong?
I think you I think you can bluff. I think if you're gonna bluff though, you need a block like the pairs and that his continues. Like he's gonna continue with what? He's gonna have a hard time continuing with eights and queens. So like maybe you're turning some eights and queens into a bluff sometimes? I don't know.
Hmm, I don't know.
Queen's too good to bluff, maybe an eight, but I don't think so like.
Well, you would be applying pressure to like his middling spades.
I'm I'm team ace three of diamonds here for sure.
Ace three is looking really good. That's a spades though. The wheels. That's all of them. That's all of them.
Yeah, the wheels are gonna keep black barrel and that's why they make better plus on the flop too because it's like a weaker ace as well. So you can get some better aces that might work old like cuz they don't have a spade.
So what are?
Backdoor wheel draw.
Yeah, it appears just to be like whatever is blocking draws. So you see a lot of the behavior with Jack nine to nine. King, Jack. King ten.
It's stuff that where if he gets sticky with a queen, we can still outdraw him.
Yeah, we can get to the river and still win.
Yeah.
Withdrawals, we're betting draws, so just not flush draws.
And then what what flushes? Do we have as well? Like what's the lowest flush that we're betting turn?
King.
Still bow on your sets? I think a lot of people like to check those. Myself included. I'm like, oh, that sucks. I gotta set now. I'm done.
But when the board pairs.
It's one of the, yeah, it's like kinda mergey. Where you can still get called back.
I think having an ace is bad here.
When you're behind, you can get there.
What's the EV of betting sets are?
Cuz I feel like I feel I feel like my betting here with like, oh, what? We're trying to fold out ace, jack, ace, king. But we blocked those.
That's just still pretty high.
I mean, to me, it makes more sense to bluff these small pairs than it does the ace ten. Cuz the small pairs can just get loads equity to fold. Ace ten, we're kind of blocking what we wanna get to fold. And if we're trying to fold out like ace, king, ace, jack, we're like, they're more likely to have a a spade like because we.
So before you go too much further, I think it would be important to note that if players are over folding and like say they're just gonna let go of all their hands without a spade and that's not a pair. Uh continuing to bluff is probably bad. Like on the flop, right? Like if they're just gonna over fall, they're gonna defend all their off suits with a single spade and fold all the other shit except pairs. Continuing bluffs and like thin value is probably bad.
Yeah.
What size was it going by the way?
Small. Right, weren't they all small bets?
Like Danny, you should keep in mind that the turn bluffing goes with equity. Almost everything. It always has to do with equity. And then the river.
No, I would I would never bluff this hand, even on the flop.
Take this out in my mind. The flop, the flop is up in the air. Okay, you can blow some combo can bluff and combo can can check whatever depends on your strategy. On the turn, it's like it's equity driven. Always. And then on the river.
Not always in position.
That's not true.
Always.
It was, it was, did you not see it's bluffing the small pairs?
Yeah, we're gonna, we have spots where we definitely find zero equity bluffs.
And then on the river, okay, if your turn.
Ignored. Yeah, go on.
If if your turn, okay? Picked up equity but dricked on the river. That's gonna be a green flag to bluff. Whereas if you're 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 blocked from the flop, didn't pick up equity on the turn. You're not gonna choose it to bluff the river. Right? So it's a filter. It's a very important filter. Maybe I'm not expressing it well.
Well, you will rebluff some of your turn give ups on certain rivers versus a check.
Not most of the time, okay? If you wanna always pick a good bluff to go with it. It's a bluff that you start with on the flop, that pick up equity on the turn, that dricked on the river.
Right.
Okay, so these are the ones you go. Then so what I'm telling you is the filter is on the turn when you pick up equity. Okay, you're. Right. So. You don't wanna bluff?
Good one, good one.
Just a call? That seems good.
Um.
Mainly.
Trying to think what the frequency with three bet.
I thought it might have some three bets. Very little, but I thought we'd have a little.
We block bottom of range, king nine.
Uh, they have not as many offsuit nines from the hijack.
Need to bet a lot here, no?
Yeah, I'd still bet the next size up though.
It's gonna check some frequency here.
Checks a lot.
I mean, we have showdown, right?
Yeah, but I mean, still get benefits from folds. You got draws. Feels like a.
Yeah, but you're gonna check back some ace high flush draws.
We want them to have, I guess we want them to have nine X in range.
Hmm, hmm, that's right. Ken, what's the uh what's the EV of calling a jam? So if you bet small and they like jam on you or something?
Well, I'm happy to call it off. I mean, it's not, I'm not jump doing uh jump uh somersaults, but I'm calling.
Yeah. Yeah, I would be calling two. I'm just curious if we're.
It's probably easy.
I would think so, but maybe.
He didn't ask if you were happy, Ken. He asked the EV, come on.
I'm happy enough to make a bet there on the flap. I think the nine just doesn't deny and it looks like the nine and eight is stuff that we want them to call with.
We're not even doing it with ace, jack suited, ace, queen suited.
I know, I know why. The reason we wanna bet the 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 ace six, the ace five. The ace three cuz it's got that backdoor equity with the straight and it also gets better aces to fold.
Yeah.
Ace nine for one bed doesn't get ace, jack to fold, ace queen to fold, ace king to fold.
Maybe it's just your blocking continues.
Yeah, but ace five doesn't get ace nine to fold.
Maybe you're just blocking like some of the common continues. Like it it really doesn't want to bet the jack, the nine, the eight, really?
What I think it is is the we block too many of the flush draws that we dominate that we wanna get called by.
That makes sense with the ace, jack, ace, queen, I think.
Yeah, there's so many more available.
But it makes uh it makes a little less sense with the nine and the eight, I think.
Well, they can have eight, nine, jack, nine, queen, nine, king, nine. Of spades.
Hmm. So if you bet small, what does their range construction look like? I guess you could finish the hand first. That would make sense.
This is gonna be a very high check cuz it's hijack versus bottom.
Well, it's gonna bet like fifty fifty five percent of the time. Uh then they're gonna check to us, yeah. And then we're gonna bet at least half time.
I mean, I think I think ten high boards are quite bad for hijack cuz bottom's gonna flat a lot ten X. Like it's gonna be a high percentage of the range.
Cool.
Uh, this is a call, I think.
Easy fold.
Are you gonna fall for that?
I mean, I'm not calling a tie, sorry. The nine blocks bluff, so I mean.
That's bad, right? Ken's right.
Nine's bad, spade is bad.
Ace is good. I don't know. Is the spades good?
Spades are.
They're terrible.
Neutral here.
You call with ace six more than, I mean, does that maybe find a hero call? Maybe, but I'm not calling.
I mean.
Yeah, I'm not calling here ever. Is that good? I don't know.
Are good.
No, this ace jack, ace jack cool sometimes?
Yeah, spades was the only zero.
What's what is it cool with?
Torturing.
Is it cool ace jack with no spade?
Be cautious here because you're pretty quick to jump on the gun. Look at spades here. Can you pretend that immediately they're better? Wow.
With ace nine, they were better.
Can I see ace jack, the offsuit one?
They say. But.
What are the uh non spade combos of ace eight? They're they're a little worse. You just don't show up here with those, I think, as part of the issue though too. Ten A, I don't know.
Will him with hearts because um like he might bluff clubs.
So this is basically our best ASI, right? And then we wanna call when we don't have a spade.
Yeah.
Yeah, you.
This one has a spade.
You might wanna call, I don't.
You don't wanna call here, Ken.
No, I let him have it. I don't care. I'm not fighting for crumbs.
For who?
Crumbs.
Did he have it? With six, eight, the straight?
I didn't see it.
And of course you have to make where you're playing is super high roll.
Mix. We, I think we use the eight some here, don't we? Or do we prefer the seven?
The what? You have twenty five big lines. You wanna three bet this poor guy? His opening and learn again.
Yes, like uh twenty percent?
Yeah, this is certainly a good free bet, I think.
Thirty thirty? Forty? How much? Fifty?
I think I think like um forty percent of the time.
Forty percent? Are you guys serious?
Yeah, go forty.
I'm like.
What do you wanna, what do you wanna do forty? Three bet?
No, 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 all right, all right, all right, all right. Twenty five, twenty five, twenty five. I'm off the ledge.
Wait, so.
I'm more like less than ten percent here.
Wait, okay, so what do you guys think the ace range construction here is at twenty five? I I don't think your three betting is kind of a hand at all.
That's all I'm saying.
Oh, well, it's just like, how do you, how do you handle a four bet? Like if you three bet, like you're just torturing your equity.
If we were low jack, we'd free bet it certainly against something like a one.
So why wouldn't you choose like ace eight offsuit if you were gonna start three betting, which is like, it's not in range? But I think that would make more sense if you were gonna three bet than ace eight suited, if you can't call a four bet. I think you just call this a hundred percent.
You think this hand is that good that you're worried about raise folding?
Well, it's just the general um it's just, it's just the general motion at this kind of step that you protect the equity of your suited combos for that reason.
You have a bunch of suited aces in your range. You can't.
I prefer to, I prefer to free bet this than ace four suited at this stack depth cuz we can hit top pair.
Geez Louise, you guys are pretty. The machine says.
Maybe I'm too ICM focused.
Machine says you guys are absolutely crazy.
Well, okay, so like ace four and ace three, you can start just jamming as bluffs.
What the fuck is this range?
I don't know why we're playing twenty five big blind chip.
Two percent free bet?
This seems very typical. This seems very normal to me.
Personally, this is exactly what I would be doing. Right? I don't know why you guys wanna three bet.
I fold at twenty five, we get more non win free bets.
Spots don't exist in Chippy V, man. Put it at twenty five ICM and it's gonna be like a pure three bet.
I uh I kind of agree with Danny. These are fairy tale ranges unless you're playing like a speed racer.
That's the only time I can think of, yeah.
Well, that's what you should be doing in position, right? Of course, we're not doing that, but that's what we should be doing.
Yeah, I'm just saying the fact that like you just, I think what Danny's saying is you just never get to a spot in a tournament where the entire table has twenty five big blinds without some kind of ICM implication. But it it's good, it's good to understand. I think it's you know, there was obviously some misconceptions with what that behavior was.
In twenty five ICM, in this configuration, ace eight suited is a pure three best small.
Yeah, that seems right.
Yeah, but this is like Chippy V.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just saying that's why my brain was backwards. And now you're gonna rewire me and I'm gonna start.
Okay, so probably free bet. I mean, yeah, I mean, if it's everyone's twenty five, it's gonna be like ICM. So free bets for your best.
What does it say here?
I mean, if I'm playing this game and in my stakes and something don't, so I just fold. Save yourself the pain.
Um, just call with hearts and spades, obviously.
I don't think you should call with heart.
Uh.
Maybe you should.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously.
Because you're supposed to under over fall on king A boards against uh another gun. When you flat here. King I like this is the worst cuz you don't have kings, you don't have ace king. You don't have much good king hands, so. Yeah, even calls with without.
Well, I'm surprised he didn't, he he fucking don't queens there. Seems weird.
Feels like an easy call.
Yeah. I was wondering.
There we go, rewiring me.
Uh reluctant call.
Yeah, I think we need to rewire you for uh for Chippy V dining anyway cuz you don't really run deep.
Hey, you're speaking to a bosky two time champion.
I know I'm speaking to a two time, but I stake them.
Yeah, show some respect, Louis.
I mean, I I came.
I stayed them all week last week, all right?
You're talking to a daily marathon free dollar.
Yeah, in one week I didn't run deep.
Four out of two thousand players.
In two days, I didn't, I didn't get beyond thirtieth.
Well, hey. We call the flop. He checks the turn. He polarize the flop.
Checking cool off the river.
Hmm, how do we handle this?
I don't know. I think we're gonna either.
You bet what on the flop?
You bet big, you went polar. Gets a complete air ball. Complete air ball of a car and then decides, you know what? It's a good time to check. This is weird to me.
Huh.
I think he's gonna, I think he's gonna, yeah, kinda like Louis's position here. Bro's gonna have a lot of bluffs here, I think, on the river. So kinda wanna.
Giving his like gutter a free card? That's gonna give up river anyway?
He doesn't have worse kings, like what? King A? That's the only worst king.
Yeah, but.
What if you bet twenty percent?
He doesn't have kings period, I think, at this point.
All of his kings are betting dark.
I don't think there's enough, there's there's not enough value.
It's the other. When he checks here, he loses a lot of kings in his range. Cuz in my mind, all of his kings, SPR one are just putting it in. Thank you very much.
Then we wanna check and keep him.
He'll have some traps as like pocket tens.
Think about the spades. Spades are paying now. They're not paying on the river. Straight, whatever shenanigan are gonna pay if they make it. But they still have a draw here. Like uh queen, jack. So you need to push the 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 rabbit. Need to squeeze the uh Mister Freeze.
I mean, if we're betting, we're not folding, so.
You need to push the rabbit and squeeze the Mister Freeze. You heard the man.
About all of it, ah seems maybe.
I'd go all in or check if with my entire range here.
I don't know. Maybe it's.
I have no clue what to fucking do.
Maybe it's just a fifty five percent. It'll make sense as well. But.
I still like small.
I'm going, I'm going full Mister Freeze here.
Yes, bet twenty and fold?
Bet twenty.
Can't fold. What's the point though? All right, I mean, if we're ah hmm.
I'm about small here.
We just put his gutters in a rough spot, right? Yeah. Like that hand still has loads of equity. We don't love checking.
Yeah.
It's weird. The hand didn't have enough value to show for value, but he didn't wanna check, so he just went with this weird small size. Uh, I'd free bet this in game.
And you can do that with your set of tens as well, like the tiny size.
No, I I'm team go with the sliver.
All right. Say we call this time cuz we lost our mind and here we are.
Bro, this is printing if you call.
Uh, not now.
That's what I'm saying. Just fold every time? Okay.
Oh. Well, that's a cooler.
Uh, pure cool.
Proper cooler.
Your call, right?
Call.
Checking?
Surely.
Yep, surely, huh?
No, not always.
Sometimes you can bet small. I'm gonna call.
Geez, I think we have to. It's kind of annoying.
You would wanna have a space and we probably have a bunch of kings and a bunch of queens in our range. Probably not many kings.
This is um.
This is a fold.
I'm kinda like just not calling this.
Yeah, in game fold.
You call against the solver, right? Still, it's close, but.
Break even, I think, Danny. I think it probably does sliver.
Cuz we got spades. We got uh more to defend with, right?
Maybe it's just always a damn king, huh?
Yeah, I guess if you're gonna, okay, go for the solver route of thinking. How are you balancing this range? Okay, so what is the value consistent in this small river bet? And what is the bluffs?
A single speed.
Having a nine is surely bad cuz he might just bluff ten nine.
Uh, jack ten would be kind of interesting. I think you might go for a more polar bluff though.
I think he's gonna wanna.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Cuz he wanna block the full house, so like everything nice.
This is like quads. I think is the value. Like I think this is full house. Is it full house? No. Maybe it's not full.
Maybe ace queen.
Man, I'm calling. You gotta call, right?
Ace queen blocks everything. I might do it like that.
Don't have to.
You gotta call some aces here.
Well, Ken, you got a bunch of queens in your range, a bunch of kings in your range, a bunch of flushes in your range. That's small.
Uh.
Some boats too. I've been convinced and and maybe a nine is bad, maybe we fold more aces than. I've been convinced, and and maybe a nine is bad, maybe we fold more aces than we think.
I was gonna say is LP, so a lot of those hands you named are actually gonna wanna raise. So we're just talking about what hands wanna call.
Yeah, ace queen. Makes sense.
Right, so if he's putting the big boat in that range, he's probably also putting like quads and just very strong things. So maybe he would, he would put like a Jack ten in there also. I don't know. It's interesting. Maybe it's just trips. Maybe he's putting trips into that range.
Did you call often enough with Jackson?
Naked king, no spade, maybe.
Um I'm not really calling here from versus hijack. I'm I'm playing this aggressive. I'm gonna three bet small or jam low-low frequency. I think three bet small is the the best.
I was gonna say, I think it's doing everything.
I guess it's jamming, just jamming or calling. Calling's kind of interesting at twenty-five. I just um.
I mean, the small blind and big blind are gonna have to squeeze a decent chunk here, all in.
Good if they, if they're gonna be aggressive behind you, but if these people are flicking chips in, I gotta ISO this. Like, if they just are like passive and wanna call a lot behind me. I don't wanna go three-four handed with jacks, so I gotta ISO. But if they're good and they're gonna ISO uh. Or squeeze appropriately, calling's nice, because it's a hand you can clearly call off with.
Yeah, I I I completely agree with you, Ken.
So you gotta always be thinking about all the, all that shit in game, right? Like.
Uh easy check here, in my opinion. Yeah, I'm just trying to get to showdown here.
Yeah.
We still just check. Yeah.
This is probably slivery, mainly folding, little three betting.
I think ace ten.
I think fold.
I don't know, there's this level. Ten all day.
Save it, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's slippery, but yeah, look at that, though. But maybe free bet if the guy's like aggressive, but default just fold.
You're not playing no Jason Kuhn out there, Louis. You can beat these guys. It's not a solver. Maybe jam sometimes? No, it's an ace.
This is, this is a trouble hand. If we free bet and get fucking jammed on, like, we don't wanna do that with this hand. Cause we're gonna have to cool off.
Bet small.
Yeah.
We're nine minutes into this tournament. I have three start stacks and somehow I'm not chip leader. What the hell?
Just a ball here.
Kind of games are you playing?
Bounty Hunter Special Eight.
Uh cool.
Do you raise for value?
Yes, wait, what's the action? Uh what happened? Bet, call?
This feels kinda bad.
No, 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 I, we don't raise here. Wow.
Feels kinda bad. I'm gonna knit call.
I'm raising.
I'm raising.
I'm gonna knit call.
It's too thin.
I feel you look crazy and you get, you get called.
Interest in this one.
Call.
It's gonna be like near zero E V.
No, bro, this is printing.
Branding.
Printing.
You can three bet this some, right? No.
Yeah, printing, printing.
Oh, we're not deep enough. We have to be deeper three bet.
Can we see our two bets here, please?
Everyone thinks I'm crazy. I just have it every hand.
Gotta be deeper backseat for this one to get in there.
Yeah, well, just.
It's forty, it probably does it at forty.
I think given a forty, that's what they skies.
That's still folding. Not a lot.
So keep in mind. Exactly. We're twenty-five big blinds deep, so. Don't do.
I wanna see the forty. I think it gets in there at forty.
Oh my goodness.
Right, you're probably three betting at a forty.
Yeah, so I'm like low weight. Ten-nine-nine-eight-eight-seven-seven-six, low weights, I think.
I think at forty, it's highest on.
I was gonna say, we're not deep enough for forty. I think you have to be. Yeah, yeah, deep stack.
It's I C M again.
It's U T G.
Oh, are we facing U T G? No, it's more like versus low jack, we do this.
It's a deep stack thing to true that with this cycle. Oh my goodness, that all that.
Uh wait, gotta go bigger. Eight, five point five.
Do you wanna go big with all the flush draws out there?
Why do you wanna dump so much chips in this?
I got eight high.
I I I I'm torn, to be honest. I think it's, he he might be right. It may just be going bananas here.
I think he's gonna big.
I bet uh, I don't like small. I like checker big. I wanna be polar here, I think.
Check, check, flop.
Wanna make it that one street or a two street?
Why would we check?
We're betting, we should bet like uh eighty-three percent.
Big like that is just one time and give up, no?
Mostly.
You.
Doesn't make sense, I don't.
No, no, you bluff again on mist, mists, spades and hearts.
I'm with Danny, I'm with Danny here.
If it's a bricky river, we can still, we gotta, we gotta go, go for it.
We picked up equity, so that small is also. I wouldn't go back past fifty-five. Let's see if you guys are right. No?
So, like ninety is gonna do it, right?
That's why you would, yeah, see, this is me checking my eight high on the turn. You bunch of punters.
I bet you nine-eight does it. Cause the gutters, I think, do it are more aggressive.
Alright, you got eight high. It's a great bluff raise now.
Yeah, nah.
Now I'll get out.
Make it, make it like a solid six.
No, we need a heart to bluff raise, surely.
Can we go back to the turn? I wanna see if the gutters uh bet big there, like the nine-eight.
Maybe five of clubs, maybe if it was a five of clubs.
In general, you need blockers, right, to bluff raise river, no?
Yeah, you kinda, you kinda do have blocker. Well, not really. I I I'm stretching. Well, to the five, so the five pairs.
Kinda have the flush draw to go big.
Yeah, but he doesn't have eight-five or seven-five.
Exactly, that's what I was saying.
No, what? Yeah, cause we block it, Louis, obviously.
That bluff would've worked.
Uh probably.
This is a fold.
Low frequency three bet, high frequency fold.
Are you playing today, Lewis?
No, I'm at work. I'm playing football, actually, so technically I'm playing something.
He's at work from home.
That's what I was wondering. I was like, that background looks awfully familiar, Louis.
Hey, I was gonna say the same thing, but I held myself, alright? Not gonna call out Lewis and say he's.
I'm gonna say check.
Yeah, I think this will mix, because we're not really getting, with the wheel draws here, a lot of aces aren't, like, I don't know if they fold any aces, so.
We got the spade.
I think it'll be a low.
Too good, it's too good. I'm adamant that this is a check. Oh my god, fuck me.
I mean, it is the, the, is the most correct option.
It's the most correct option. Dude, bet folding here sucks.
It really does.
Well, if you bet small, it's that, they're not gonna jam too much. I don't know.
Yeah, but if they make it seven, like.
Like, he doesn't get to do this. Right? I guess we don't have kings in our range to bet.
What is happening?
King, seven, two, I guess we have some kings, not many, though.
I don't really get this at two.
Ken, this is, this is us saying you don't get to do this. I'm gonna float you with everything and bluff you on the river.
Yeah, that's what I do.
We'd like bluffing this guy.
Good luck. What a savage float.
Don't you wanna go all in?
Which is lead range there, though? For real, like, how many leads does he have?
It's such a weird, like, fish-like line he takes. Just check, call, turn two pair and donk into you.
Like, large, kinda large, so I like to see that.
Uh mostly check, sometimes bet, maybe.
Yeah, I was thinking.
We can bluff, yeah, we got the wheels.
Wheels usually work well. Let's blast. Never mind, let's off the hook.
What?
If you tiny bet the flop and they just call. In a way, they're kinda capped, and then you can just start going bananas.
Check.
That's one. Why you wanna check here, Lewis? It's a pair of board.
I mean. It's like so good, right? We want some flush draws in our check range. We don't really wanna, we don't really wanna get check raised.
You wanna have like ace ten in your checking range here, not ten-nine.
Hmm, this one's checking, checks the most common knowledge. It's why we didn't wanna get raised. Now we're raised, we could be dead.
This is okay.
No, we could be dead.
What do you mean? There's no way.
Just call.
How could we be dead?
Yeah, just call.
What if the king has spades now? How dead are we?
How could this have happened to me?
What if he has King eight of spades?
Can we just? Nine and ten.
Hit the eight?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah, we hit, we hit the eight. Did I cover this guy? I do.
I called it.
Holy shit, we did it.
You raise or call?
For sure, just call.
Do we get zoom share?
We have the invincible giga nuts.
Giga nuts.
Wow, it's giving us the action killer river.
Or is it the river we needed?
It is the river we needed, oh.
Oh, he's still cool with trips anyway.
Happy days.
Pilot, free bet.
Do it, do it, do it. Yes, let's go.
Race. Too shallow. Or not.
Too shallow.
What do you mean? It was free betting.
One percent.
Check or bet? Free bet. That's more.
I have a bet here. No?
Or even more? Oh no.
Checks out of the time.
We're gonna, we're gonna need some jack hicks in our checking range, so.
Do we check more with or without the spade?
Uh check more without.
Check more with the spade.
Ah ha, we have conflicting answers.
Cause we're stronger.
Bet more with the spade, because we're stronger.
Yes, I said, check, check more without the spade.
I think in position, you. Uh you check more without it, right? Out of position, you check more with it?
Never made a really. A difference there, if any.
Uh yeah, okay.
It's mixing weird here. And then checks more with the spade, am I wrong? No, it checks more without the spade.
Seems like it doesn't really change it. Uh yeah, I guess maybe, well.
No, you can't, you can't do anything.
Club ones are betting the most. That's what it looks like to me.
Now we must decide, do we want a free street game here?
Yes. So six big blinds?
Yeah, certainly, it's gonna be, yeah, small, but yeah, check.
Not quite strong enough, it seems.
It's gonna, I mean, we're not gonna get free streets from a worse hand, really, are we?
Right, we should probably. Do it with King Jack. And not Queen Jack. Yeah, King Jack is the line, because King Jack can get called by Queen Jack and Jack ten, and Jack nine suited. But Queen Jack's kind of in the middle.
Queen ten, are we mostly free betting or folding pretty? So then, or?
Mostly folding. Or did we just not bet flop with it?
We're not even here for you.
Okay.
Queen ten, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you check, bet with King Jack.
Now, we also lose to Jack ten, but it is a pretty brick river.
Bet seven.
I think there's value to be had from his ten X of uh spades and.
That the pop. We pop, but then haha, now we wanna play big. Oh my goodness.
Oh my god.
What have we done? How fast do you call here?
Dude, I'm in agony here.
We're like couple of range, no?
I'm using my entire time bank. And then probably folding.
Breaking my wrist, all of my fingers, because I called too fast.
I mean, you're smoked here.
In game, yeah.
You are definitely smoked here, but. I mean, what are you gonna do?
Oh wow, what a shock.
Shocking.
Jack ten.
Did a free bet, man.
How did we not win?
If only we were like our knit opponents and we just checked back the river.
Oh, this is a fold.
How often do you foul here, Lewis?
Uh zero, I mean, one percent maybe, yeah, zero, yeah.
In a PKA.
What about seven-six?
We we just look to this, nine-eight's the bottom, though. No, eight-seven, I mean, eight-seven. Fold.
Oh yeah, you wanna fold. You don't call here ever?
Uh I mean.
These, these hands are just printing, I don't know why y'all are folding these like middling suited ones. I know twenty-five is like not very attractive, but.
That's good enough to call, right?
Because th- this isn't real life.
Even in, even.
Real life.
Even in ICM, I'm calling.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not correct.
Correct according to what?
According to Doctor Danny.
According to the fucking chart.
Shit. I mean, what, what is high is he betting though on the flop? Out of position?
Of course. I guess so.
Like, he shouldn't, he should, he should probably check most of his ace high on the flop. So when the ace comes, like, surely this is better for us, no?
Think we need to try something here, because. King I is ready to fold.
We're good, yeah.
All. You get better tens to fold.
We're gonna have ace jack with a spade, ace ten with a spade. Maybe ace queen suited, ace queen hearts.
He bets pretty big on the flop, on a pair of.
If you bet, if you get check rest with a flush throw, it's painful to fold.
So, what did he do now? He bet polar into us on the flop, we call and he checks, he checks the ace. So he's convinced himself between, like, he's gonna have like tens through queens here, maybe kings even. He's gonna have.
Yeah, but he bets big on that pair of board.
He's gonna have naked, well, the four is kind of inconsequential, to be quite honest.
Do you bet small then to start boxing him?
Hmm, that could be a good option.
Is, is this a great?
Like, um, four point six five?
You go geometric, right?
Maybe. I don't know, it's a good question.
I think bet four, bet four's good.
If we're gonna bet, I like four. I'm not convinced we have to bet.
I check.
Uh, I'm kind of in, like, I'm torn between. I, I, I'm pretty torn here. Like, these polar bet check lines are very strange to me, like, I, you just don't encounter those a lot. That are balanced anyways. So, um.
Well, here it makes a lot of sense, because the ace changes the texture quite a bit. And it.
Right, so.
All of the stuff you mentioned.
Our tall also changed the texture, changed.
So we're, so I mean, if we follow that train of thought. We can agree that we're behind right now, we can agree that his range has been downgraded right now. So. It just would make logical sense to kind of attack that, no?
Yeah, king I is gonna fold.
But he's looking, Grinch has better aces, uh.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, Maxi, but he, he also took a polar rain, he took a polar bet on the flop. That's one clue, it's not likely an ace. The second clue is that he checks the ace on the turn. So you can start discounting ace X, I think, pretty heavily, with the exception of ace four. Maybe he does this with ace four.
I think we're bad polar on the flop because of this kind of texture from U T G, it's a range polar bet, in my opinion, nine four four. I guess maybe it's good, it would be nice to check, to report.
Yeah, maybe we could look at it after, right?
Okay.
I'm kind, I'm kind of in the boat of bet small. I've, uh, I've talked myself into it, I kinda wanna bet. Four, six, five, I think. That leaves enough room to jam on the river. Okay, so.
It's a little bigger, because you get like a clean response from a. Do you get king, like his best kings to fold here when you bet like?
Uh, maybe some of his kings, but I don't know, if he's got like jacks, I don't know how much he's folding.
In majority, you probably get most player to fully king here, but. The machine, you think you need to convince him a little bit. Yeah, we're targeting. So nice.
Should look at the, uh.
Well, I do check a lot. Four. For sure, but like pocket queens won't fold to four, we'd have to bluff river, and I guess we have a bad combo to bluff river. So we just wanna huge it once. Yeah, that's something I've been like picking up on a little bit, is when you, when you have like bad blockers that aren't gonna wanna bluff. The next street, you tend to size up and try to. One and done it. Often.
Well. Thing is, like, say we bet small, does he fold every king eye? See, he's mixing king queen. But it does, it does.
Okay, but.
Not really. Uh, yeah, you get, you get it all done, yeah, 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 that's what I was gonna say.
Like, in ten, in ten eights, like, the worst hand in not range, so like, it just makes sense to bet it.
And then when you, what's the difference then?
Difference between what?
Blast, they're starting to get indifferent and with like, yeah, kings and queens and stuff. It's weird, it shows it as high E V, but it's still folding. Oh, depends on the suits, okay.
Yeah, some suits are just nuked.
Yeah, it doesn't want spades.
Right.
Because it blocks some bluffs, the phosphorus.
Exactly.
Well, can you show please U T G range, uh, flop? Bet.
Yeah, yeah.
Hmm.
It's, it's, it's gonna be, yeah.
Yeah. Look, it's like betting. Range bet big, almost.
No, notice it's mostly nine X.
Oh, yeah.
It's mostly nine X over pairs and then these offsuit, offsuit high cards with a spade.
Sorry?
It's mostly, um, top pairs, over pairs, and then, um, offsuit hands with a spade.
I don't know, I thought every combo was betting here.
Because of the paired board will.
Likes nine? I'm sure what you said is right, Lewis, but it just lets everything. Okay, Lewis. How often do you call here?
Uh, we cool.
You, Lewis, Lee, you.
Oh, me, ink, uh, like, I don't know, like.
Lewis tries to show responsibility.
You're such a liar, Lewis, you've never called here in your whole life.
What do you mean? I, I definitely do, with two reshock stacks behind.
Show me you're not a base, Lewis.
Check.
Wow. Are you happy if a spade turns?
Yeah, the jack of spades.
Are you happy if an ace comes?
We have a marginal made hand, check.
We can play one street here, no?
Yeah, I'm kinda with Lewis, it's probably bet smaller check, but I would check, I think.
We have, this is gonna be one of the highest check frequencies in range. It's gonna be nines and tens, it's mostly check.
Probably, right? Probably.
Yeah.
Right.
Or tens is just jamming.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yep, cool. Uh, cool, the bet's too small. Well, snatch it off, yeah.
Oh, we got him. He bluffed his spade.
I know what I do here, but. Uh, the soul was just gonna cool.
Wanna print and call?
I free bet this every time.
Oh my goodness, Lewis.
Wow, bet big, half-pour.
I'm on that. Oh my goodness. So, bet as small as you can.
Easy check.
Why do you think it's betting so small on the flop?
Uh, yeah, it's a bit weird, isn't it? I guess. I guess this board isn't that good for us.
Maybe it's.
They have a little over pairs.
It wants to bet more often, so it's merging everything.
I think it's too good for us.
What do you mean too good?
We bet tiny because it's a really good board for us, we don't need to bet big.
Hmm. Yeah, look at the equities, it makes sense, look at the equity breakdown.
Yeah, yeah, check out the graph.
We're, we're probably just got like fifty-five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's like a medium range of high, it's not even that high, but, so that's why you want some checks still.
All right.
The jack's kind of a brick, isn't it, though? Do we ever wanna bet small and then just check back river?
Um.
But like, what worse hands are calling, that's the problem.
Feels like a bad investment here to bet. Well.
Wow.
What are we gonna do?
He's saying he's got a flush or a full house?
What full house does he have?
All right, sevens, eights. Checks.
We block eights.
My fault in game always.
I mean, yeah, when they don't deliver, right? I mean, it's gonna be like cool if you're playing Stephen Chidwick, fold if you're playing anyone else.
Yeah, exactly. You didn't.
We're playing Chidwick here, alright?
Oh, Chidwick bluffed us.
No, we called.
I mean, different between flatting or raising, getting it in, whatever.
A twenty percent call. Thirty percent call. Thirty twenty.
Um, I think we three bet more and then we call. What's going on in?
Open less.
Yeah, pushing, makes sense.
So, so do we, do we flat later position because the blinds have to shove like way wider as a squeeze? Well, they're not gonna do that against.
No, it's just because late position opens too weak.
I'd bet three point eight seems good.
I agree.
I'm sorry, I'm getting distracted.
Uh, quarter pot.
No.
No, you click, you click ten percent.
Oh.
And all in. All in and get stacked by kings? Oh, we win. Nice. Call.
Think so, right?
Bet small.
Why you wanna bet here?
We have queen high with good, uh, backdoor stuff. Like, I'd rather bet this than the ace nine suited, for sure.
We have position.
Jack nine and ten nine would be even better. Um, but I think this is okay. We saw a similar board just now, right?
Was this ever free betting pre?
Yeah, only four percent of the time.
Oh, wow.
He's donking, huh? Alright, just fold. We didn't hit our turn card. He makes it easy. Bluffing with the best hand. Uh, jam, right?
Or call?
Actually, maybe call is better. No. Fold, yeah? Or, yeah, yeah.
Hundred percent fold? Or a little bit of.
Was it, was it a burger?
Just a fold.
Do we have a burger? Just a fold, alright.
This is a. Think it can all in fold frequency?
I call.
Yeah, call king queen suited, maybe, maybe just jam that too.
Last spot with king queen. You think it's mixing fifty fifty?
I could believe it. The later the opener, the more you flat it?
Louis, if you see this position, uh, player. Pre flip raise status eight percent, do you still shoving?
Yes.
Okay.
What was it, eight percent pre foot race? Definitely, definitely not.
If it's like two hundred hands and I really know he's a net, you never do it, because you don't, you don't give action to the nets.
Yeah, if there's, okay.
That sounded personal.
If it's gallon here, you can jam. Okay, if it, if it's not, if it's like knit like gallon, you can jam in his face, it's fine. If it's like knit, knit, knit. Like gallon times two, or gallon times three.
Super, super net.
Uh, you can't, you can't give that guy any action. That said, you can't get, give gallon any action either, right?
No, no.
What if it's a guy who's gonna snap you off with a seven offsuit? Are you jamming on him?
Hey, tough spot, that's what you are.
I made big mistakes giving gay an action.
Also, his opening range is still like way wide, right? It should be fine. He'll still have plenty of folds too.
I know what I'm doing.
What are you doing, Lewis?
Free, free bet every time.
No, Lewis, don't do it.
Brazilians getting out of line, man.
It's not necessary, man.
You say in a Brazilian opens, you're not free betting, yes?
No. Not even calling. Now what? Mamos, mamos, we bet small?
Better board, check high. Maybe one. Yeah. I'm not calling this. Combos from bottom, keep ten, only, I should call.
What have we done? How did we get here?
Happened to me.
Full spot.
Maybe you win.
Could I hold this one specifically?
Lewis wants to re-bluff, Jesus Christ.
We block king six suited.
Oh my goodness.
The two.
No. We're just out.
We, no, we don't though, what do you mean?
Oh.
Oh.
So difficult.
Might have to pile this.
Huh? You have to pile?
Maybe.
Maybe we have to call, no?
If it was high jack, I'd jam, but. If it was high Jack, I'd jam, but low Jack, hmm.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Now what?
Oh, wow.
About the table.
Don't have a speed. Put that small, that would be fun. I think it's just better to check here. If the six. That's as good as it gets.
What, what bet sizes do we generally use when it goes check, check? Like, and we're in position?
We, with strong hands, probably sixty percent. I would go sixty percent like this with Jax, flushes. And the thing that is really good, I think.
Is our, is our hand too good to get go all in for all the cookies?
I don't think it's too good.
Yeah, no, get the flush to pay.
Have Jack, maybe? What? You can't.
No, cold. Degree.
No, he said he's cold, he's cold, he needs a jacket.
Yeah.
I close, uh, it's all good, I closed the window.
Thanks, Louis.
Okay. I'm still very bold. You may need a jacket. Clothes?
A, a Jack eight. Isn't he, that doesn't do anything. I guess it's not a bad card.
Okay, so I didn't need the, uh, neither a Jack nor an eight.
A Jack of hearts could have been fun.
Don't, don't think I need anything, right?
Definitely didn't need that.
I do, I did. No.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
Just call.
I'm kidding.
Love jam would have worked.
What did he have?
Jacks.
We're not shoving this.
All the cookies?
No, Jack King is cookies. This is a jacket cold.
Yeah, I'm cold.
Uh, give it small blind versus button you jam.
What?
Bet small.
Yeah.
What?
Thirty three.
What do you see that is good here in this hand?
The Jack high.
So like we get.
Why is it checking, man?
Queen eyes to fold? He has to fold, is that why?
Why is it checking forty five percent of the time?
Because we don't, not have anything, Lewis.
Cause when you check back and hit a ten or a nine, there's a high likelihood that it's good. But if you bet any calls and you hit a ten or a nine, then. I don't know what's going on. Do we win or no? And you can continue, it's like, um, the turn is either gonna be really good for us or really bad for us. So we kinda just. Wait and see. And then proceed accordingly. I don't know. The two cards under the top card, maybe that's a heuristic.
Here could be, I mean, indifferent.
No spade, check back.
Above the five, better bet sometimes.
That's fine.
The EV is gonna be the same. Yeah, look.
There's that small. I wasn't ready for that. I didn't get my cereals.
We're gonna bluff turn, give up river?
Lewis.
Let's find out.
You gotta turn your seven and two, hmm. Why is he checking an ace on the turn? This guy just under the gun. What are we doing here? Are we seriously doing this?
I guess it's one of our worst hands, I don't know.
Maybe he just doesn't have enough flushes?
Yeah, that, that could be a heuristic. But there's a Jack of spades on the board, Ace of the spades on, what, he's got King ten, Queen ten?
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
Some of them would check.
King nine.
Flop.
He, he's blocking his, the, a majority of the combo, well, not a majority, I mean, he's blocking some of the combos that he would have that are flush. I mean, eh, like Ace X. I mean, he has, still has King Queen, still has like King ten, I guess. King nine.
Queen nine.
Oh, I mean, not, uh, Queen nine, I mean, from under the gun, he go to the under the gun range.
Yes, I think Queen nine's gonna be in there, man. Or something, sometimes.
Yeah, Queen Jack, oh, well, Jack's already there, so never mind. I mean, you're blocking a majority of the nut ranges that he has for a flush. Maybe that's why it thinks it has less, I don't know.
Let's do the bet line then, go.
And big?
Ah, okay. Alright. It's always the tail on the river, right?
Alright, great, how often do you go here?
Uh, not enough, uh, I'm normally three betting.
No, 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 jam, jam, jam this.
Oh, wait.
He's versus low Jack.
Oh.
Tricky question.
It was a trap.
It was.
I don't think anyone was ready.
I mean, I, I don't think I'm ever flattening this hand. Never, not once.
Oh.
Man, what a swag.
Broke it, man.
We got DC'd midhand, we don't know if we're, we're gonna come back and have a big stack or no table.
Chain is broken.
I'm not sure I'm calling enough sevens in games there, man, it's like, it's at the bottom, but.
Let's try again.
Oh shit.
Nah, just flat.
Power or don't the power?
You're torching if you jam here.
I, I agree with Louis on that one, you are a hundred percent torching.
Always call sevens.
What about tens?
You, you, you can mix, I think.
I'm down.
I disagree, just, just jam tens all the time. Versus low jack.
Think jamming is great, but I think mixing is fine. Cause calling is also pretty great.
If, yeah, I mean.
It's mixing, right?
Here we mix, right, yeah.
Yeah. What, what was the EV differential?
Nothing.
Okay.
Three point two, three point twenty two.
When it's a mixed EV, so it's gonna be the same, essentially.
So when, when he checks back, what is our str- general patterns on turn on the break like this? I mean, the range wise, do we just bet larger here? Or bet small, or what we should do with on the break?
So one check, check and check again?
We check back.
Might just check again, yeah, yeah, like now we can, we're one step closer to showdown.
We're in position?
We still lose to some stuff, tens, nines.
We lose, we lose to that.
I mean, that's an annoying river, but we surely we call one.
Oh, raise. I mean, we don't have seven, six, do we, actually? Or do we have seven, six?
I.
No, just, just, just fold, just fold.
No, we call one.
Gotta call. Oh my god.
Fucker.
Do it.
Well, he wouldn't have folded turn anyway.
No.
Copium.
When the three of hearts came, if that was the three of diamonds, we might have. The crazy part is too, is that we have a blocker to that flush. I'm flattening.
We must raise some suited aces, surely.
Can we jam here?
No.
No.
Lewis.
Yeah.
That.
Look at the EV of jam though.
Free bet in.
It's five suited jams.
No. Yeah, it's five suited maybe, but.
Chippy V on the bottom, man, you get like no free bets.
Okay, maybe forty big blind.
Boy, it's free, it's loose.
Not the baby.
Surprise.
I thought having an ace was good.
Uh, it's, it's kinda crazy that you're shoving with the smaller ones. I, yeah, check.
Oh, now.
At least bet small, please.
Small. That was a bigger, need to polarize.
Yeah, we. We, we wanna pop a big pot for when we get there, right?
You wanna get, uh, better aces to fold.
Wow.
Need to be convincing.
I think we might have to bluff this, in general, we don't like bluffing, miss, uh, Ace high flush draws, but the worst ones you get to.
What? What's, say we bluff, what's the first hand that it will pull, like, that beats us, like better A size, right?
Yeah, probably.
What's that?
Sevens.
Ten.
Ace ten.
Seven, sevens, eights.
A C, a seven. Did we get rid of any of these on the turn?
He's gonna have loads of pocket pairs we can fold.
That's a good point, LP, I don't think we're getting any of those to fold the turn, or the, anything that didn't fold us to us on the turn is not folding to us on.
I mean, of course, we're not getting, we're not getting nines through, through, uh, through sevens to fold.
Yeah, but we're, like. I, I don't think we're getting, we're getting, if they haven't, if they, yeah, I'm giving up, if they had an ace here, they would have given up on the turn when we bet, right? For the most part. Like, if it was Ace ten, for example, like there, or Ace eight, or Ace seven.
That's a good point, Roger, I don't think we ever win when we check here.
Think you need to punt here.
I think as well.
Eight point five then, or what?
I think we have to go big.
Are you trying to?
We picked up big, we tell the turn, right? And then we break the river, then. It's, sometimes he might float with better aces, so there might be some room there. You know, we, and then, uh, what is a six or a five doing if we rip?
Better aces like Ace Queen?
Like Ace King, like Ace ten, and then what is a six doing?
Ace ten's a stretch for me.
Yeah, I know, but what is ace?
What about Queen ten of diamonds?
And.
What is a six gonna do if we, if we?
Queen nine of diamonds.
We block diamonds.
We don't, we don't have the queen, we don't block the queen. Yeah, man, our blockers are fucking terrible.
Wow, so we're, we're bluffing zero missed Ace high phosphorus here.
I, I gave up.
I don't know about zero, like the four is also terrible, you want him to have a four.
We don't.
Yeah.
They're bluffing the queens to get kings and aces to fold.
Do you ever like bluff like random clubs, like Ace four of clubs?
Okay, so it's not even the queens, it's like. About the, the river top pair, that's better.
What, what do you do with Ace four of clubs?
It's not that thing, it's not the.
Ace three of clubs.
Cause look at this, diamonds, it's really just the queens, right?
Yeah, wha- what about clubs? Do you ever bluff clubs?
Not, yeah, more.
Oh my goodness, I've flopped the mega world.
I free bet this a hundred percent of the time.
Hmm, I think it's more free bet than be forty big. Blinds deep, so we're more free bet.
Makes sense. So now.
Check or bet?
I think it's a good check, second pair. If I have more. Now I'm.
Check.
Do we, do we wanna value bet?
Yeah. We block Ace King, Ace Queen. Please.
Small?
Yeah, small is good.
No.
So, so, um. The, the reason why I think it likes to check is because when you, when you bet at this board, like what do you? What are you doing? What are you necessarily doing exactly? The only things that.
Do you think value?
Are you always getting value?
Jacks, tens, nines.
You gotta remember you just split with every queen.
You, yeah, you, you chop with like a majority of queens.
It's a little bit of one of those reverse free roll spots. Like you can get called by King Jack maybe. I don't know if Jax, tens, nines, they're probably pretty indifferent. I would just fold personally.
On, on this board?
Well, if I was the villain with Jax and. Check, check, check bet, I mean, maybe I call one, I don't know.
You've got a bet now. Bet like five. Or four, one of them. Wow.
I want it small.
I feel that. I feel you need to get shit, get like Jax to call.
Our eights to call.
Man, it feels like generally we check a lot from the bottom against U T G, the flop.
They have, chicks. They have the range advantage, right?
Yeah.
And then also, they also have the nut advantage. I'm with Louis, I fucking hate this spot, I run into this shit too much.
Mostly jam.
On the flop forty four percent with cold and other we jumped or raised. Okay.
What were we doing on the river in the last one?
Checking back? The nice hard board, you got the second pair.
Yeah, that's what I would do. Same thing here. Or bet small with the spade, maybe? The queen of spades, pretty good.
No check. We don't have nines often here, we don't have aces often, we don't have aces or kings out often.
Sure, okay. Some betting in there.
Might just check again.
Yeah, check it down. Well, it's a little different now, there's value to be had from a king. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wider range, way wider range.
And the board's not paired crucially.
Flush didn't get there. Do they have more flushes than we do?
Um, I feel this webinar's just been hard to be a net.
Tight is right, bro. Defense.
Hmm, I guess just flat.
Yeah. Flick it in. The call, that is. Not your whole stack.
We're not allowed to free bet suited aces anymore. Just check it back.
No, no, no. You're gonna bet.
It like. It likes the bet. I'm, I'm betting small here too.
Check ace ten, check ace jack. Ace queen. Uh, flat. Yeah, I was gonna say some jamming as well. Cause it's late position.
I like this board. This is a very nice board.
Do you have a check?
No.
Yeah. Well, what about, uh? You have to bet.
That's what you get, checker.
Bet smaller, I think bet two's kind of nice.
You have like giga equity. Why would you check flop?
Yeah.
Well, it goes big.
You block all the.
Next.
I guess they're gonna continue a lot of like nut flush draws if you bet flop. I mean, now we. Uh. Do we just check again?
No. You go get all five even.
Three point seven?
I think five point five.
Yeah, bigger.
Oh.
Yuck. Well, now I have.
I think check.
I.
I think.
What got there?
I, I'm pretty sure. Uh, uh, sets.
Ace jack of spades. Yeah, okay, check. Eh.
I think check.
I don't know, man.
Why are you guys?
We put SP one.
Yeah, okay.
Like, we're not getting cooled by worse hands.
Okay, yeah. Alright.
Yeah, that would've been, that would've been a massive punt to jam there.
I'm gonna keep some time for mark the hands.